Hare Ram, 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 Hare, Hare Krishna. Dandadpranam Swaldiva devotees. We start with prayers. Shumajnana Dimranthasya Jnanaanjana Shalakhaya. Chakshurunmilitam yeena Tasmai Sri Gurave Namaha. Sri Chaitanya Manu Vistam Stapitam yeena Bhootale. Swayam Rupa Kadhamayam Dadhati Swapa Danthikam. Mandeham Sri Guru Sri Uda Padakamalam Sri Gurun Vaishnavamcham. Sri Rupam Sagrajatam Sahaganaraguna Tandhitam Tamsojeevam. Saadvaitam Savadutam Parijana Sahitam Sri Krishna Chaitanya Devam. Sri Radha Krishna Padan Sahaganalalita Sri Vishapandhitamcham. Namum Vishnu Padhayah Krishna Preeshthaya Bhootale. Shrimadhe Bhaktivedanta Swami Niti Namne. Namaste Saraswade Deve Gauravani Prachari ne. Nirvisesh Shunyavadi Paschatyade Shatari ne. Namum Mahavadanyaya Krishna Prema Pradhayate. Krishnaaya Krishna Chaitanya Namne Gauradusheni. Anjadatvaatmakam Krishnam Bhakta Rupa Swaroopakam. Bhaktaavidharam Bhaktaakyam Namani Bhakta Shaktikam. He Krishna Karuna Sindho Dina Bandho Jagatpate. Gopesh Gopika Kanta Radha Kanta Namusute. Tapptikaanchana Gaurangiradhe Vrindavanishwari. Vishwabhanusute Devi Paramami Haripriye. Vancha Kalpadharu Vyashcha Kripasindu Vyahe Bacha. Adritanam Pavanibyo Vaishnavibyo Namum Namaha. Jai Sri Krishna Chaitanya Prabhu Nityananda. Sri Advaita Gradhar Sri Vasadigor Bhaktavinda. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, 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 Hare, Hare. Hare Ram, Hare Ram, 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 Hare, Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, 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 Hare, Hare. Hare Ram, Hare Ram, 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 Hare, Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, 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 Hare, Hare. Hare Ram, Hare Ram, 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 Hare, Hare. Muukam Karoti Vachalam Hangum Langayade Kirimya Trupadam Hamande Sri Gurun Vinakarinam. Paramanandam Adavam Sri Krishna Chaitanya Mishvaram Hari Om. Tatsat. Gurave Gaurujendraaya Radhikaya Karalayay Krishnaaya Krishna Bhaktaaya Tatbhataya Namum Namaha. Hare Krishna Sudhandadpranam Swaldiva devotees. Thank you for joining in. We are actually currently studying this book, The Path of Perfection. We are almost on the last chapter of this book, we are on chapter number 10. Which is also entitled the same as the book, which is The Path of Perfection. So in this we saw how Arjuna is also telling Lord Sri Krishna, Reprobat quotes. What is, what is Lord Krishna's explanation to, to Arjuna? About the, the nature of this material world, right? So Arjuna is asking that, you know, he is giving so many reasons. And Krishna finally explains to Arjuna that, you know, the, 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 the. A Brahma Govanalo Kapanaravartinu Arjuna, right? He says, he tells that this material world, whatever be the position of somebody in this material world. Or one attains the position of Brahma in, and goes to Brahma Loka. It all will come to an end once the highest credits are over. And then, Laishla Prabhupada explains how Krishna explains in Bhagavad Gita. About this three-fourth of this world, the three-fourth of the world is the spiritual world. Where there is no annihilation, where there is no destruction. Whereas one-fourth portion which is comprises of this material world is always subject to destruction. And he also saw the lifespan of Brahmaji. Brahmaji has a very, very huge lifespan, right? Four hundred and eleven billion, thirty million years. So very, very huge amount of lifespan that looks like almost eternity from our calculations. So many earthly years. But it is said that it is just a lightning from the eternity perspective. From the view of the perspective of the supreme personality of Godhead. So, so Prabhupada is actually emphasizing here that we should try to go to that spiritual world. Which is three-fourth of the creation and not be attracted to this one-fourth creation of the Lord, which is the material creation. So we continue reading here. Parastasmatu Bhavonyo Yattovyatta Chanathanaha. Yasasarveshu Bhuteshu Nashitsuna Vinashati. Wherein Prabhupada is explaining here how when, when the. When this material world gets completely annihilated at the end of the lifetime of Brahma, right? Or even the pralaya happens at every night of Brahma. That time it happens only till the Swarga Loka, right? Till that time it happens, pralaya happens every day of Brahma. But until Brahma Loka, when does it, when does it annihilate? It annihilate when, when Brahma completes its hundred years. So in this way, this pralaya happens in various frequencies in this material world. And it is always subject to destruction. Whereas Krishna is telling here. Parastasmatu Bhavonyo Yattovyatta Chanathanaha. There is a nature which is, which is superior to this material world. Which is beyond this manifested, non-manifested matter. And that place is supreme and is never annihilated like that. Okay, so let's ask someone to read, okay, Shobha Madhaji, go ahead. Yet there is another nature.
Hare Krishna Mataji Dandadpranam Shila Prabhupada Sijee. Yet there is another nature which is eternal and is transparent and so does manifested and non-manifested matter. It is supreme and is never annihilated. When all in this world is annihilated, the past remains as it is. Madhavat Kita eight point two zero. We cannot calculate the length and the breadth of this universe. There are millions and millions of universes like this within this material world. And above this material world is the spiritual sky. Where the planets are, it's all eternal. Life on this source planet is also eternal. This material manifestation comprises one in one fourth of the entire creation. Ekamshena six four dadas. Ekamshena means one fourth. Three-fourth of this, of the creation is beyond this material sky. Which is covered like a ball. This covering extends millions and millions of minds and also after penetrating that covering. Can one enter the spiritual space? That is open space, eternal space. In this verse it is stated. Parastasmatu Bhavo Anya, Anya. Yet there is another nature. Yeah. Yet there is another nature. The word Bhava means another nature. We have a city and only with this material nature. But from Bhagavad Gita we can understand that. There is, there is a spiritual nature that is transcendental and eternal. We actually belong to that spiritual nature because we are. But presently we are suffered by the material bodies and therefore we are a combination of the material and spiritual. Thus as we can understand that we are a combination of both natures. We should understand also that there is a spiritual world beyond this material universe. Spiritual nature is called superior and the material nature is called inferior. Because without spirit, matter cannot move. This cannot be understood by experimental knowledge. We may look at millions and millions of stars through telescopes.
Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna Madhaji, Hare Bhojp. Yeah, okay. So, so here Prabhupada is talking about a very wonderful point. What is that? Prabhupada is talking about, what is the nature of this material world? The nature of the material world is that it is inferior. It is temporary, it is subject to destruction, right? But and then he is talking about that spiritual world which is eternal. So there is, there is this external, external world, the Bhiranga Shakti of the Lord. That is the source of creation of this material world. But Bhava, the word Bhava represents that there is another superior nature. Which is transcendental to the material world and that is called the spiritual nature, right? Whereas we are, you know, the Tatasta energy of the Lord, right? We have the Antrangashakti, the Bhiranga Shakti. And we also have this spirit, spirit which is the Tatasta Shakti, right? Only without, only with the intervention of spirit can matter move. Otherwise Jada cannot move at all, right? So this is what Prabhupada is going to, is going to explain further. How by materialistic knowledge, this particular science cannot be proved. We have to invest faith and then move forward in this subject matter. Here Prabhupada is talking about that. This cannot be understood by experimental knowledge. Shulriya Jochana Madhaji, go ahead.
Hare Krishna Mataji Dandadpranam. This cannot be understood by experimental knowledge. We may look at millions and millions of stars through telescopes. But we cannot approach what we are seeing. Similarly, our senses are so insufficient. That we cannot approach and understanding of the spiritual nature. Being incapable. We should not try to understand God and his kingdom by. I don't know Madhaji, I have a full network.
Yeah, now it's okay, yes.
Being incapable.
Oh Madhaji, we are not able to hear you. So let me ask Navkishori Madhaji, go ahead. Similarly, our senses from here.
Hare Krishna Mataji Dandadpranam. Similarly, one, our senses are so insufficient that we cannot approach and understanding of the spiritual nature. Being incapable, we should not try to underestimate, sorry, understand God and his kingdom by experiential, experimental knowledge. Rather we have to, rather we have to understand by hearing Bhagavad Gita. There is no other way if we want to know what our father is. We simply have to believe our mother. We have no other way of knowing except by her. Similarly, in order to understand who God is and what, what his nature is. We have to accept information given in Bhagavad Gita. Information given in Bhagavad Gita, there is no question of experimenting. Once we become advanced in Krishna consciousness, we will realize God and his nature. We can come, come to understand, yes, there is God in a spiritual kingdom and I have to go there. Indeed, I must prepare myself to go there. The word vyakta means manifest, the material, this material universe that we are seeing for, partially seeing. Before us is manifest, at least at night we can see that stars are twinkling and that there are innumerable planets. But beyond this vyakta is another nature called vyakta. Which is unmanifest, that is the spiritual nature, which is sanatana eternal. This material nature has a beginning and an end. But spiritual nature has neither beginning nor end. This material sky is within the covering of the mahatatwa matter. This matter is like a cloud when there is a storm. It appear that the entire sky is covered with clouds. But actually only an insignificant part of the sky is covered because we are very minute. If just a few hundred miles are covered, it appears that the entire sky is covered. As soon as wind comes and blows the clouds away. We can see the clouds, sorry, we can see the sky once again. Like the clouds, this mahatatwa covering has, covering has a beginning and, and, and. Similarly, the material, similarly the material body being a part of a material nature has a beginning and, and, and. The body is born, grow, stays for some time, leaves some by-product, dwindles and then, and then vanishes. Whatever material information we see undergoes these six basic transformations. Whatever exists within material nature will ultimately be vanquished. But here in Krishna is telling it, the beyond this, when, 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 sorry, vanishing, vanish. Vanishing, no, vanquished. But here in Krishna is telling us that beyond the, beyond this vanishing. Cloud-like material nature, there is a superior nature which is sanatana eternal. Yaha sahshu Bhuteshu Nashitsuna Vinashati. When this material manifestation is annihilated, the spiritual, that spiritual sky remains. This is called vyakta, vyakta. Hare Krishna Mataji, should I go?
No, no, thank you, thank you, thank you. So here two words are being used, what are the two words that have been used here? Avyakto, Avyatta. Avyakto means what is manifested, that is this material world. Avyatta means that which is not manifested, right? So this material world which is manifested is subject to destruction always. There is no way that this can stay eternally. Whereas that particular world which is the spiritual world is never annihilated. So these are the different term, the same terminology, right? Yaktto and Avyakto. Yaktta means what is manifest, right? Avyaktahi gatir dukham dehabadhirabha gatir. Krishna tells in Bhagavad Gita. Kleishu adhikataras te sham avyakta sakta chetasa. Avyakta means what is not manifest. That's why Krishna says to those who try to understand the supreme personality of Godhead by the impersonal feature. Kleishu adhikataras, kleishu means very difficult. Kleishu adhika, very, very difficult for a person who is trying to understand the Lord by impersonal, in the impersonal form. As they are meditating on the impersonal feature of the Lord. Kleishu adhikataras te sham avyakta sakta chetasa. Avyaktahi gatir dukham. What is the gati of such a person? Dukha, dehabadhirabha gatir. Because we are situated in this body and we are undergoing suffering. We think that God cannot have a body. Why? Because, because if the Lord has a body, then he should also be suffering. But that is not the understanding of God that we have, right? He is sachitanaananda. That's why people think now God cannot have a body. But then they don't understand that Ishwara Paramakrishna Sachit Ananda Vikraha. He's got a body but that body is not material, that is a spiritual body. Similarly, whatever we see in this material nature is but a perverted reflection of the spiritual nature. That is why they are just the opposite. This material nature is always subject to destruction. Spiritual world, there is no question of destruction, it can never be vanquished, right? And then, yasasarveshu Bhuteshu Nashitsuna Vinashati. Neither is there, neither is there annihilation nor is there a creation of the spiritual sky. Because the spiritual sky eternally remains. Whereas we know that Brahma actually creates this material world every time. Every time Brahma does tapa, tapa, tapa. Every day morning wakes up, he has to do this creation, right? We are happily chanting Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, 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 Hare, Hare. Hare Ram, Hare Ram, 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 Hare, Hare. But what is Brahma doing? Brahma doing, every day in the morning he is doing this creation seva. The sub-creation seva for the pleasure of the Lord. So in this way, every, every day of Brahma, every night of Brahma, there is a material world gets annihilated up to a certain portion. And is recreated by Brahma the next day. Also this is his seva. Whereas the spiritual world is eternal, there is no need for creation of the spiritual world. That is a basic distinction between the spiritual world and the material world. All right. So now, Manimala Madhaji, go ahead. In the second canto of Shrimad Bhagavatam.
Hare Krishna Mataji Dandadpranam.
Hare Krishna.
The second canto of Shrimad Bhagavatam, we find a description of the spiritual sky and the pupil, people who live there. Each nature and features are also discussed. From the second canto, we understand that there are spiritual airplanes in the spiritual sky. And that the living entities who are all liberated travel like lightning on those planets throughout the spiritual sky. This many, this material world is simply a limitation. Whatever we see here is, here is simply a shadow of what exists there. The material world is like a cinema wherein we see but a limitation or a shadow of the real thing that is existing. This material world is only a shadow as stated in Shrimad Bhagavatam one point one point one. Yatra tri sargo in mid. This illusory material world is a combination of matter. In stone windows are windows. We often see many, many queens. But no sane man thinks that there are many queens are real. He can see that they are limitations, they are imitations. Similarly, whatever we see here may be beautiful just as a many queen may be beautiful. But it is simply an imitation of the real beauty found in the spiritual world. As Sri Dharaswam Swami says. Yat satvata mithya sargo.
Is at the vath pratiyate.
That spiritual world is real and this unreal material manifestation only appears to be real. We must understand that reality will never be vanquished and that is, that, that in essence, reality means eternality. Therefore, material pleasure which is temporary is not actual. Real, real pleasure exists in Krishna. Consequently, those who are up to the reality don't participate in this shadow pleasure.
Hare Krishna, thank you Madhaji. Hare Bhojp, Hare Bhojp. So we'll also get a chance to read when we're reading Bhagavad Gita. So let's, let's study this, you know, the path of perfection wherein Prabhupada is, Prabhupada is very, very clearly mentioning here. Again and again he is reiterating the fact. What is the fact that Prabhupada is again and again reiterating? Yet satyataya mithya sargo api satyavat pratiyate. The spiritual world is real, this material world is the, is a perverted reflection, right? Urdo moolam adha shakam. That is, what does Krishna sing in fifteen chapter of Bhagavad Gita? This material world is a perverted reflection of the spiritual world, right? So the material pleasure which is here is not real pleasure. Because it's temporary, it is not actual. And it is just a shadow of the pleasure that we can find in the spiritual world. Or the pleasure that we can derive by doing spiritual activities even in this, situated in this material world, right? Because the spiritual activities themselves are susukam kartumavyayam. Similarly, the activity is done in the spiritual world, they are also susukam. But the activity is done in the material world for sense gratification. What do they lead to? They lead to frustration. Why? Because we are engaging in our own sense gratification whereas we are meant to satisfy the senses of the Lord. We are meant to be servants of the Lord. But when we become controllers, then we become frustrated. Prabhupada gives a very beautiful example here. We see mannequins. Mannequins means like kind of statues we find, you know, outside the garment shop generally, right? Where they put the nice dresses for the mannequins and they try, they try to attract people. You know, who may want to come and buy those garments, right? But if we, we cannot think that, oh, that mannequin or that particular statue that's outside the shop, that is real. No, we all know that it is just for the purpose of sale. They have just made those mannequins and they dressed it up with nice, you know, you know ornaments or dresses etcetera, right? But these are not real, they are not real people, they are just imitations. Similarly, Prabhupada gives example of how this material world is just like an imitation of the spiritual world. Where there is no actual bliss, right? In the fifteen chapter Prabhupada mentions in the first verse perport about, about the tree, right? The actual tree which is there on the bank, which we can see, which we can feel, which we can touch the trunk of the tree. From where we can get the fruits, that actually represents the spiritual world. So what is the material world? The material world is the reflection that we see of this particular tree in the water. If we jump into the water, can we get the fruit that is hanging on the tree? We cannot. If we jump into the tree, can we touch the trunk of the tree, the branch of the tree, the leaves of the tree? No, we cannot. So it is just exist, it looks as if the tree is below, the reflection. We jump into the water, we cannot feel the tree because the tree is not actually there. Similarly, this material world, it looks as if all of the pleasures of the spiritual world which are described are also there in this material world. But since it's a perverted reflection, we actually don't get happiness. We only get frustrated when we want to enjoy this material world. That's what it is given here. And in the first verse of Shrimad Bhagavatam that is quoted here. What is that? Janmaadiyasiyatonayadithrattas charkeeshu viknyasvarat. Teenne brahmaharda adhikaviye muyantiyat suraya. Muyanti, muyanti means being put into illusion. Who are put into illusion? Suraya, suraya means Devas. The Devas are actually put into illusion by the supreme personality of Godhead. How is that? That means we mistake a rope to be a snake, a snake to be a rope. We mistake this material world to be a place of enjoyment. Whereas this material world is a place of reformation. It is a place of actually getting punished for all of our sinful actions. We are getting the reactions for that and we have a free will. We have the free will whether to continue to engage in those sense gratificatory tendencies and get more and more entangled. Or understand our position and then engage in the service of the Lord and then ultimately get liberated from this. One-fourth section of the creation which is called the material world. All right. So now we are on the Madhaji, go ahead. That's when everything in the world gets annihilated from there.
Yeah, Madhaji, Hare Krishna Mataji Dandadpranam. Thus when everything in the material world is annihilated, that spiritual nature remains eternally. And it is the purpose of human life to reach that spiritual sky. Unfortunately, people are not aware of the reality of the spiritual sky. According to Shrimad Bhagavatam, seven point five point three thirty-one. Naate vidusarvata sarva.
Swarta.
Swarta gadim he vishnum. People do not know their self-interest. They do not know that human life is meant for understanding spiritual reality and preparing oneself to be transferred to that reality. No one can remain here in this material world. All Vedic literatures instruct us in this way. Tamasimajodhir tamasomajodhir gamaya. Don't remain in this darkness, go to the light. According to the fifteen chapter of Bhagavad Gita fifteen points is. Na tath basate suryonas shashankona pavakayat gatvana nibhrtante tadhamabarama mama. That a board of mine is not illuminated by the sun or moon or by electricity. One who reaches it never return to this material world. This material world is dark by nature and we are artificially illuminating it with electric lights, fire and so on. In any case, its nature is dark but the spiritual nature is full of light. When the sun is present, there is no darkness. Similarly, every planet in the spiritual sky is self-luminous. Therefore, there is no darkness nor is there need of sun, moon or electricity. The word suryo means sun. Shashankho means moon. Pavaka means fire or electricity. So these are not required in the spiritual sky for illumination. And again Krishna herein says. Yad gatvana nibhrtante tadhamabarama mama. That is my supreme abode and no one who reaches it never returns to this material world. This is stated throughout Bhagavad Gita. Again in the eighth chapter of Bhagavad Gita eight point twenty-one. Avyakto akshara idhi utastam aho. Hare Krishna Mataji, thank you.
Hare Bhojp, thank you, thank you. So yad gatvana nibhrtante tadhamabarama mama. Krishna tells, don't be, don't be happy being in this material world, which is dukhaliam and ashashvatam. Rather become interested to come back to my abode. This is what Krishna is declaring several times and this is what Krishna is actually coming to this material world for. To give us a glimpse of this, of this, of this world where there is no janma, mrityu, jara and yadi. To actually attract our attention like how the mannequins are there outside, right? They are, they are simply to attract our attention to what is there inside the shop. So that we just go inside and we buy that particular thing, isn't it? So here, that is what is given by Lord Sri Krishna, which is quoted by Prabhupada here, right? What is it? We are not supposed to be happy sitting in this world which is lighted by, you know. The, the, the lighted by the sun or the moon or fire or electricity, right? Here surya, shashankho and pavakha, right? But we want to go back to that abode which is eternally illuminated by the supreme personality of Godhead. That is the place that we want to go. We don't want to go, we don't want to get settled in this material world which is dukhaliam and which is ashashvatam like that. This is what is mentioned by Prabhupada. So let's move forward now. Let me share my screen. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, 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 Hare, Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram. Ram, Ram, Hare, Hare. Correct. So that is my supreme abode and one who reaches that never comes back to this material world. So Krishna is basically trying to draw our attention or to get attracted to that spiritual world. Who will read now? Okay, Vishwabhanukanya Madhaji, read it and then we'll end with you and then we will move to Bhagavad Gita, yes. Again in the eighth chapter Bhagavad Gita.
Hare Krishna Mataji Dandadpranam. Avyakto. Kas. Avyakto akshara idhi yuktas. Tangah ho paramangadhim yam prapyanani bhrirtante tadhamabarama mama. Thank you Mataji, Hare Krishna. That supreme abode is called unmanifested, unmanifested and infallible, infallible. And it is the supreme destination when one goes there, he never comes back. That is why supreme abode. Again, the word avyakta meaning unmanifest is used. The word axara means, axara means that which is never annihilated. Or that which is infallible. This means that since the supreme abode is eternal, it is not subject to the six transformation mentioned previously. Because we are presently covered by address of material senses, we cannot see the spiritual world and the spiritual nature is unconceivable for us. Yet we can feel that there is something spiritual present. Even a man completely ignorant of the spiritual. Even a man completely ignorant of the spiritual nature can somehow feel its presence. One need only analyze, the analyze his body silently. What am I? Am I this finger? Am I this body? Am I this hair? No, I am not this and I am not that. I am something other than the, than this body. I am something beyond this body. What is that? That is the spiritual. In this way, we can feel or sense uh the presence of spirituality within this matter. We can assa. We can sense the uh absence of spirit when a body is dead. If we wit- uh if we witness some someone dying, we can sense that uh something is living the body. Although we do not have the eyes to see it, that something is spirit. Its presence in the body is explained in the very beginning of Bhagavad Gita at two point seventeen. Avinasi tu tad vidhi uh yena sarvam idam tatam. Uh vinasam avas siasya uh na kastit. Kharthi. Now, uh know that which prevents, uh prevents the entire body is uh indistractable. Then no one is able to destroy the imperishable soul.
Hare Krishna, thank you Mataji.
And Dandatprana.
Hare Krishna, Dandatprana Mataji, thank you. So here we will end the discussion of the path of perfection. Hmm, here Prabhupada is talking about two very important points. We'll discuss that and then we'll move to Bhagavad Gita, right? One is um uh the differentiation between uh the body and soul, right? We say that, uh you know, if I like when there, when somebody is dead, uh we say that, who chala gaya, right? He has left the body. So who are we talking about? The person who has left the body, we are talking about the spirit soul. Why? Because the body hmm is still lying there, but they are still saying the person has already left. Uh so that what is left is what is uh what is called the soul. Hmm, we are actually eternally spirit souls. Uh we have taken this particular material body, hmm whether of a man or a woman. Uh we have taken this particular material body because of our past desires and past vasanas hmm and past activities. Because why do we perform activity? We perform activities so as to fulfill our desires, right? So we are performing various activities and we are desiring more and more things. Uh because of that, we are preparing ourselves for our next body. Hmm, but we don't want a another material body. That is the reason we want to engage in devotional service. We want to always remember Krishna, never forget Krishna. So that at the end of this body hmm uh when, when we are, when the time comes that we have to give up this body. Then we don't take up another material body. We don't get into the womb of another mother, right? Rather, we want to go back to that spiritual world, want to go back to Vaipunta, yeah, right? How is this possible? Yam yam vapi smaran bhava, tyajaty ante kalevaram, tam tam evaiti konte ya sadatad bhava bhavita. Right? Krishna tells in Bhagavad Gita. That whatever state of mind you think at that time of death, you will attain that state without fail, right? Krishna says, but then we cannot say that, okay, okay, let me do whatever I like the whole of my life. But at the time of death, I will think about Krishna. Is it humanly possible? That's not at all possible. Why is it not possible? Because when we are healthy, when we can think about and plan our activities if we don't think about Krishna. How are we expecting to think about Krishna when the kapha vata pitta of our body are all imbalanced? Hmm, and we don't have uh the 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 capacity or the hmm shanta rese, right? We don't have the ability uh to actually think of anything at the time of death, right? Because we are uh we half the time we don't have any consciousness. Hmm, at that time, how can we remember the Lord? It is not possible. Then how do I have no control? We have a mechanism by which Krishna is guiding us. How we can think of the Lord at the time of death? What does Krishna say? Antika lechamameva smaran muktvakalevaram ya prayati samadbhava. Yaati naati atrasamshaya ha, right? You can come back to me without a doubt. If you think of me at the time of death, but then I am not able to think of Krishna at the time of death. Because it's like millions of scorpions biting the body, hmm so much pain is there. I am not able to think of Krishna. So is it possible or not possible? Uh it is possible. Hmm, Yaacharya has explained, uh it is possible to think of the Lord at the time of death, provided hmm we have thought about the Lord. When we are happy, when we are healthy, in this condition of life, when we always endeavor to think about the supreme personality of godhead, Krishna. Then at the time of death, when the kapha vata pitta are all imbalanced, then Lord Krishna will ensure uh that he ensures that we will remember him and that is the perfection of life. By our own endeavor, we will not be able to remember the Lord. But when the Lord wants us to remember him. Uh because of our endeavor to remember the Lord when we are healthy, in this way, we will be able to remember the Lord at the time of death. That is the formula that is given by Lord Sri Krishna. And here Bhagavad Gita uh is how to be remain Krishna conscious, isn't it? Maam Anusmara yudhyacha. That's what uh Krishna told Arjuna. Uh always remember me and then you perform your duty. Uh in this way, by remaining conscious of me, if you continue to perform your duty, then at the time of death, I will also remember me by my mercy. Hmm, that is what is the conclusion of Bhagavad Gita. Hmm, all right. So um that's specifically given in chapter eight of the Bhagavad Gita hmm which is entitled Attaining the Supreme. Okay, so now hmm let's move on uh to our uh Bhagavad Gita study hmm which uh you know, we started yesterday. Uh what did we do yesterday? Yesterday we did, uh we started with introduction. Uh in the beginning, uh we spoke about the uh the potency of the uh the uh what do you call Mangalacharen prayers, right? Invoking auspiciousness, right? Auspiciousness is invoked when we offer our obeisances to the supreme personality of godhead, right? And and before even offering uh the obeisances to the supreme personality of godhead, it is more important to offer obeisances to the guru, right? Because it is only by the mercy of guru that we are able to understand uh Lord Sri Krishna. We are able to understand our relationship with the supreme personality of godhead. Hmm, and then we went on uh with the uh with offering our prayers to Rupa Goswami. Then we offered our prayers uh to the Shat Goswamis of Rindavan. Then we offered our prayers to Lord Sri Krishna, Shrimati Radha Rani. And then we offered our obeisances to all the Vaishnava devotees of the Lord. Why? Because you're all desire trees, they can fulfill all of our desires. Uh we we desire to perfect our lives. Uh it is only in the association of devotees that we can practice spiritual life. And in this way, be conscious of Krishna throughout our life and then be uh able to remember Krishna at the time of death. And finally, we offer obeisances to Sri Krishna Chetanay Mahaprabhu and Nityananda Prabhu, Advaita Acharya, Gadatar Prabhu and Shri Vashtakur. Uh where the Lord, we we saw how the Lord has appeared in his five features. Hmm, and then we offered um prayers to Shishi Radha and Krishna by chanting this most important verse which is called uh the yoga dharma is chanting of this Hare Krishna Mahamantra. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. So this is where we um concluded with the Mangalacharen prayers. Uh and then we moved on. Uh why is Bhagavad Gita, because Bhagavad Gita is called Gita Upanishad? Uh what did we say? Why is it called Gita Upanishad, right? It's called Upanishad uh because upa means um near. Hmm, ni means to stand, uh as a shad means to sit down, uh ni means near, right? Upanishad means we have, we need to understand Gita by actually hmm sitting at the lotus feet of our guru, right? But now uh we are all, how are we studying Bhagavad Gita? We are studying from the book of Shri La Prabhupada, right? So in this way, we are actually hmm sitting at the lotus feet of Shri La Prabhupada and trying to understand this Bhagavad Gita. Which is a commentary written by Shri La Prabhupada. The purpose of Shri La Prabhupada to understand this scripture that was actually spoken by Lord Sri Krishna, right? And then we saw about how, what is the spirit of Bhagavad Gita, right? Uh and how this Bhagavad Gita has to be studied, right? What did we see? Uh Bhagavad Gita is like a manual for human being. And how we need to practice this Bhagavad Gita is like a patient, how he takes the medicine given by the doctor, right? I'm just trying to quickly recapitulate, uh uh quickly trying to recapitulate and then we will take questions in the end, yeah. So um uh so how are we supposed to understand and assimilate this knowledge of Bhagavad Gita? Uh we are supposed to take it like how a patient takes a medicine, right? There is diet and there is also um the prescription as to uh how the medicine is need to be taken. Whether it is after food, before food, whether it is five ml, ten ml, one ml, whatever it may be or before food or after food. Uh and whether it is needs to be um the um uh you know, um uh taken along with uh along with some other medicine or is need taken alone, right? All of that prescription is given by the doctor. According to the prescription of the doctor, just like when we take the medicine, then we become cured of our disease. Similarly, uh when we take this um this medicine, it's a NHA Oshadi Maya, Nasi Baro Lagi, Harinama Mahamantra, Laavat Tumi Magi. Right? Ultimately, we want to get taste in chanting Hare Krishna, that is yoga dharma. In order to chant Hare Krishna Mahamantra with faith, uh what do we need to do? We need to purify our intelligence hmm so that my intelligence can direct our mind and the mind can direct our senses. And in this way, we engage in devotional service. In order to purify the intelligence, we need to study the shastras. We need to study the shastras hmm with the formula that is given by the uh Lord. How we are supposed to study the shastras? Uh we are supposed to hear from a bona fide spiritual master. And in this way, uh we follow the instructions of the spiritual master like a diseased person follows instruction of a doctor. And then we understand Bhagavad Gita as it is. Hmm, then we saw about the importance of disciplic succession. How, how it is very important to understand this spiritual knowledge or this learning of Bhagavad Gita through a bona fide spiritual master, right? Several verses were quoted hmm by by Prabhupada here. Evam parampara praapram nimamradarshyobidho sakalanehamata yogonastoha parantapa. Uh because this knowledge that had initially given to sun god hmm because it got uh destroyed hmm due to the influence of time. I am giving this secret again to you, Arjuna. But why only Arjuna? Why Arjuna of all the people who were existing at that time? Hmm, that Krishna again says. Abhato hime sakha cheti rahasyam hi etad uttama. Uh because you are my devotee and you are not envious of me, therefore I am going to give you this knowledge of Bhagavad Gita. So is this knowledge only for Arjuna? No, we also saw how when we study the Bhagavad Gita, it is like um you know, when we receive a letter from our spiritual master, right? Nowadays, we uh we see how when Shri La Prabhupada's letters have all been documented into one particular book. Hmm, all the letters given by Shri La Prabhupada, uh especially to his disciples, right? So for example, if we were existing, uh you know, during that period of nineteen sixty-eight to seventy-seven, we had the opportunity to interact with Prabhupada. And say Prabhupada had written us a letter. Uh how much we would maintain that letter? We probably frame that letter in the most prominent part of our house and probably read it every day, right? But we still have that opportunity, right? Whatever perport is written by Shri La Prabhupada, they are all uh letters to us. Uh how we need to practice our spiritual life, how we need to balance our material and spiritual life, how we need to develop our love and attraction for Lord Sri Krishna. Hmm, all of these are love letters. Each perport is a love letter, hmm it's a letter written to us. Uh so in this way, we have to study the Bhagavad Gita, right? Not that uh it is given for Arjuna, so it is meant for Arjuna. No, it is meant for us because Krishna tells, Arjuna nimittam aatram bhavasavyashachan, right? You are going to become an instrument, uh not just in killing all of these soldiers, right? Because I have already killed them, right? You are also going to be an instrument to deliver this knowledge of Bhagavad Gita to all those people who want to perfect their lives. Hmm, so in this way, we study Bhagavad Gita from a person who is coming in a bona fide Guru Parampara. We render service and we hear with a humble state of mind. And in this way, we will arrive at the real perport of Bhagavad Gita. And what is that? Hmm, we have three things that we will understand at the end of the study of Bhagavad Gita. One is sambhanda, two is abidaya and three is preojana. We need to understand our relationship with the supreme lord. Hmm, in the second chapter itself Krishna starts with. Asoshan and asoshastam pragnavatam se bhajase. Gataasun agataasum shan anushochantipanditaha. What are the qualities of a, of a devotee, a sober person? He knows that there is a distinction between body and spirit and we are spirit souls and we are. Jivayara subarpohe krishnara nityadas. We are eternal servants of the Lord. That is the sambhanda jyansh that we will understand as we go through. And secondly, abidaya, abidaya is what is the process of devotional service, right? We have um swadharma and we have sanatana dharma. Our sanatana dharma is exclusive um doing of the nine angas of bhakti, starting from shravnam to atmanivedhanam. And what is swadharma? Swadharma is the duty that we perform day in and day out as a mother, as a daughter, as a husband, as a man, as a woman, as an employee of an organization. Uh all of these duties that we perform, they are all swadharma, right? Arjuna was also performing his swadharma as a shatriya, he was fighting in the battlefield, isn't it? So as we perform our swadharma and sanatana dharma, we need to be remem- we need to be remembering Krishna. Maam Anusmara yudhyacha, do your, do your fighting, but think of me. Hmm, so in this way, um Krishna told Arjuna how he needs to perform his duty. And then finally, what did we see yesterday? We also saw what are the five kinds of rasaas, right? What are the five kinds of rasaas? We saw it's shanta rasa, dasya rasa, uh and then sakya rasa, then there's um matsalya rasa and madurya rasa. So one can enter into any care of these relationship with the Lord. But one with that, that one has to find out when one, one attains swarupa sidhi. Hmm, that means by when we perfect our devotional service, we know what is the rasa hmm that we have with the supreme lord. Uh but until then, what are we supposed to do? We are supposed to serve the Lord in the mood of a servant, right? Because we also saw that in every rasa, what is a prominent feature? Service is a prominent feature that is there in every rasa with the Lord, whether madurya or matsalya or dasya or sakya, does not matter. Uh the servant, attitude and serving for the pleasure of the Lord. Hmm, these are very essential things in all the rasaas. Uh and then uh we saw what Arjuna is saying, right? Arjuna told Krishna, right? And we also need to arrive at this conclusion. If you've read and heard the Bhagavad Gita properly, what is that? Arjuna is saying, you are paramdham, right? Pavitraam, you are parambavan. Uh you are purusham adidevam, you are ajam, you are vibhum, right? You are great, you are unborn, you are the supreme enjoyer, you are the supreme personality of godhead. You are pavitraam, you are pure, you are untainted by material contamination. Hmm, this is what we also need to arrive at. Uh at the end of a study of the Bhagavad Gita, if we think that I can also become god or I am already an associate of god. That means we have not really understood the perport of Bhagavad Gita. At the end of the Bhagavad Gita, we need to understand that I am the servant of the Lord. My position is to serve the Lord. The Lord is uh vibhu and I am anub. I am infinitesimal part and parcel of the Lord. Mamiva amshu jiva loke jiva bhuta sanatana ha. Manasasthaan indriyani prakritisthaani karshati. Currently, I am in karshati mode. Karshati means suffering. Why? Manasasthaan indriyani. Because I am thinking that this mind and intelligence and the senses are meant to satisfy me, uh they are meant to give me enjoyment. But when I understand that mamiva amshu jiva loke jiva bhuta sanatana ha. I am amshu of the supreme personality of godhead and my duty is to serve the supreme personality of godhead. Then what happens? In pleasing the supreme personality of godhead, we will derive real pleasure. Hmm, so this is the knowledge that we have to arrive at by the study of Bhagavad Gita. Hmm, if you don't arrive at this conclusion, then there is something wrong with the way we have studied. We have not um we have not um understood the essential perport of Bhagavad Gita. Then we need to recheck our motivations and why we are, why did we study Bhagavad Gita? We need to rectify our motivations and then study Bhagavad Gita again. Hmm, and this is the conclusion we need to arrive at. Uh so this is where we ended yesterday. So let's con- let's uh continue with where we left yesterday. Right, yesterday we, we finished here, right? Arjuna, finally, what did he say? Um you are parambrahama farandham pavitraam parambavan purusham shashvatham dibyam adidevam ajam vibhum, right? You are great and um I, I am, and not only are you telling me this, right? Ahushtva rishi sarva devarishi narashta ta asito devalo vyasa swayam chayva pravismi. Right, this he tells after the Chaturshloki verse, right? Ten point eight, nine, ten, eleven. Hmm, this is Chaturshloki verses of Bhagavad Gita. After that, what did, what does Arjuna say? Not only are you declaring to me that you are the supreme personality of godhead, but ahushtva rishi sarva. All of these rishis are also telling the same thing. So we are guided by guru, shastra and sadhu. Right, Bhagavad Gita is a scripture, right? It is given by the supreme personality of Godhead himself. Dharmam tu saksha Bhagavad pranitam. And then uh what is Arjuna saying? Even the sadhus are saying the same thing that Krishna has the supreme personality of godhead. And our siksha guru, our eternal preeminent siksha guru for all of us is uh Shri La Prabhupada. Shri La Prabhupada, what does he say? Uh in every, Prabhupada says, ah Sri Bhagavan vacha, it does not say Krishna vacha, isn't it? It says Arjuna vacha or it says Sanjaya vacha, it says Dhritrashtra vacha. Does it anywhere state Krishna vacha? No, why? Because Krishna is always addressed in entire Bhagavad Gita as Sri Bhagavan vacha. Because we are only interested in the opinion of Bhagavan. We are not interested in the opinion of Dhritrashtra, we are not interested in the opinion of anybody who wants to challenge the Lord. Hmm, we are only interested in the opinion of the supreme personality of godhead, right? So in this way, when we understand Bhagavad Gita, uh we also come to the conclusion that Krishna is the supreme personality of godhead. And I am supposed to be the servant of that supreme personality of godhead who is Krishna. Hmm, so this is the conclusion we need to arrive at. We know the destination and if you are not reaching the destination, we know that we got diverted here or there, right? So we know how we need to study, we know where we need to reach. Hmm, so we can constantly monitor at the end of every session, whether we are on track, right? So tadvidhi pranipatena with humility and with a surrenderance attitude, we need to study Bhagavad Gita or we need to hear Bhagavad Gita from a person who is coming in a bona fide uh Guru Parampara, Brahma Madhva, Godiyavashna Parampara. And ultimately, we need to reach this destination where we are completely convinced. Uh how I can apply these principles of Bhagavad Gita in my daily life by remembrance of the Lord all the time? So that I can remember Krishna at the time of death. Hmm, that is the conclusion uh that we always remember Krishna, never forget Krishna. And uh in this way, go back home back to godhead. Hmm, that is what we need to do. So um yeah, the one more thing I want to say and then we'll start. Uh it is said that Bhagavad Gita hmm actually teaches us how to live. Uh because it is a manual. Ah it is said that Bhagavad Gita actually teaches us how to live, ah because it is a manual. For ah it is a manual for how to live. That's why it's called a life manual, right? And then when we graduate from Bhagavad Gita, we go to Bhagavatam. And Bhagavatam, it is said to be a manual that is going to teach us how to leave this world, right? How to leave this ah body, right? How to live in this world by remembrance of Krishna Bhagavad Gita? How to leave this world is Bhagavatam and Chaitanya Charitaamrta is how to love the lord. And how to love everybody in this world as as the part and parcels of the lord. Hmm. That is the ultimate stage, ah wherein we are able to do anything, ah to take not just ourselves. We are not just selfishly interested in perfecting our life, we want to give this knowledge to others. Like Chaitanya Mahaprabhu, ah he showed how to have these loving exchanges with the devotees. And ah you know how to preach this message of. Ah we preach to everybody, like in this way, everybody goes back home back to godhead. So these are the three scriptures. We are in the preliminary, the first stage of the scripture. What is that? Bhagavad Gita. Okay. So let's start with Anjanam Madhaji. Madhaji, go ahead. Now one may think from there.
Now one may think that because Krishna was the friend of Arjuna. Arjuna was telling him all this by way of lecture. Um but but Arjuna, just to drive out this kind of doubt from the minds of the readers of Bhagavad Gita. Substitutes these praises in the next verse. Ah when we, he says that Krishna is accepted as the supreme personality of godhead, not only by himself. But by authorities like Narda, Asita, Devila and Piyasa Deva. These are great personalities who and distribute Krishna. Uh who distribute the vedic knowledge as it is accepted by all acharyas. Therefore, Arjuna tells Krishna that he accepts whatever he says to be completely perfect. Manin, I accept everything you say to be true. Ah Arjuna also says that the personality of the god, ah lord is very difficult to understand. And and that he cannot be known even by the great demigod. This means that the lord cannot even be known by personalities greater than than human beings. So how can a human being understand Lord Krishna without becoming his devotee?
So here, very important point, right? It is not like two friends are talking. One is, one is praising the other, flattering him and the other is, you know, very happy hearing the glorification of the other person. No, we are not talking about um the conversation between two friends where one person is flattering another. And the other person is, you know, is happily accepting all the compliments. Ah it happens between friends, right? One one tries to flatter the other in expectation of something else to be given, to be received from the other person. No, right? Why is it so? That is why Arjuna is very clearly telling, right? Arjuna is a friend of the lord, Arjuna is a devotee of the lord. Ah Arjuna may be praising the lord, hmm, but how is it that we believe ah that whatever Arjuna is saying is true? Hmm. That is why Prabhupad is making a point here, that we are not simply understanding the the conversation between two friends. And one person is just flattering the other saying, oh, you are very beautiful, you are the hmm. You know, I have not seen anybody more beautiful than you in this entire world. Ah like this, we are not reading the conversation between two friends, right? That is why Prabhupad is especially emphasizing here, ah that what is Arjuna saying? Not only am I accepting what you are saying to be true, because I know you are the supreme personality of godhead. But also this is the word of all the acharyas, right? Naradhuni gives bhakti shakti to everybody. And what is Naradhuni saying? Naradhuni is saying Krishna is the supreme personality of godhead and Krishna is the same thing, saying the same thing to Arjuna, right? So we don't believe everybody who claims themselves to be god. We verify with this, there is this three-pointed filter. What is that? Guru, shastra and sadhu, right? We 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 apply this three-filter test. Ah and we also know ah what Krishna tells Arjuna, right? And Prabhupad mentions in the perport. Ah how if anybody claims themselves to be god, then we ask them to show the universal form or we ask them to lift the guard and hail. Right? Because we don't want to simply believe anybody is, anybody is god, right? That is why Prabhupad said sentimentalism, right? What is sentimentalism? Just just because my father or my parents or my grandparents, they worship the particular devata or they worship the particular god. I am also worshiping the same god. I don't know why I am worshiping, but just to continue the tradition. Hmm. That is sentimentalism, right? Whereas we want to be rooted in proper facts by depending on guru, shastra and sadhu. If somebody asks us tomorrow, ah why are you worshiping only Krishna? Why, why are you not worshiping any other devata? Why are you not worshiping? We should be able to clearly quote from the shastras. Ah quote from guru, sadhu and shastra, ah that this is what is specifically mentioned ah in the shastras and that is why I am following. Otherwise, when five people tell, right? Ah then our our confidence will be crumbling. And then we think, oh, we maybe we are not worshiping the right god, right? Because um like the other day we were discussing, right? If we have, if we go to a shopkeeper and we give ten rupees, the shopkeeper will give us chocolate every day. We can have that chocolate every day and the shopkeeper is not bothered, whether my teeth is getting spoiled. Ah whereas if I, now if I give ten rupees to the supreme personality of god and ask for chocolate every day. We can be very sure Krishna will not give us that chocolate. Ah or you know, our parents, right? We go to our father and ask for ten rupees every day. Why? Because I won't eat chocolate every day. Hmm. Did you think your father or our father will give us? No, because he is more concerned about our teeth, our good health, right? Similarly, our worship of the various devatas is like our relationship with a shopkeeper. If we worship properly according to the vedic injunctions, we will get whatever we want. But whatever we want for ourselves need not be the best thing for us, right? It will make us probably remain in this material world for life after life after life. It will get bound us, it will bind us to this material world. But if we worship the supreme lord, ah it's like we go to our parents, if we have a genuine reason, the father will give us not just ten rupees but even hundred rupees. Ah so that we get the right knowledge. Right? If we need to get an admission to a particular college, ah whatever is the fees, the parents pay that fees. Why? Because we are going to get a proper knowledge from a bona fide institution, whether it is medicine or engineering degree, isn't it? Ah similarly, the lord will give us something, ah only when, um only when it will help us prosper prosper in spiritual life. Only when it will help in advance in spiritual life, not otherwise, right? That is why even amongst devotees, right? Ah there are some people who are very rich, there are some people who are poor. Krishna gives according to, because Krishna is there in the heart of every devotee. Hmm. If a devotee practices spiritual life very nicely, engages in charity according to the prescribed vedic scriptures, right? We do find many devotees who are rich also, because Krishna knows that this person will utilize the money in a proper way. Ah whereas, I mean, I am not saying there is no black and white formula here, that if somebody is rich, then Krishna has got that trust. Right? Very intrinsic law of karma is also there, entangled in it. But what, the point that I am trying to drive here. Hmm. Is whatever be our condition, ah it has been personally planned for us by the supreme personality of godhead. So that we can go back home back to godhead, right? Krishna says. Hmm. Krishna is equal to everybody, but. But for a devotee, Krishna is personally inclined ah to offer his guidance to a devotee. So this is what we need to remember always. Alright, let's move forward. Yeah. So only a devotee can understand Krishna, because others, yoga maya or the shield is already covering the supreme personality of godhead. Okay, Ali Ranandini Madhaji, go ahead. Therefore Bhagavad Gita should be taken up.
Yeah, Madhaji. Therefore Bhagavad Gita should be taken up in a spirit of devotion. One should not think that he is equal to Krishna, nor should he think that Krishna is an ordinary personality or even a very great personality. Lord Sri Krishna is the supreme personality of Godhead. So according to the statements of Bhagavad Gita or the statements of Arjuna, the person who is trying to understand the Bhagavad Gita. Who should at least theoretically accept Sri Krishna as the supreme personality of Godhead. And with that submissive spirit, we can understand the Bhagavad Gita. Unless one reads the Bhagavad Gita in a submissive spirit. It is very difficult to understand Bhagavad Gita because it is a great mystery. Just what is Bhagavad Gita? If the purpose of Bhagavad Gita is to deliver mankind from the innocence of material existence. Every man is in difficulty in so many ways. As Arjuna also was in difficulty in having to fight the battlefield, battle in the battlefield of Krschandra. Arjuna surrendered unto Sri Krishna and consequently this Bhagavad Gita was spoken, not only Arjuna. But every one of us is full of anxiety because of this material existence. Our very existence is in the material, is in the atmosphere of non-existence. Actually, we are not meant to be threatened by non-existence. Our existence is eternal. But somehow or other, we are put into asat. Asat refers to that which does not exist.
Thank you. Thank you. Hare Krishna. Yeah. So here, what is, what is Lord Sri Krishna saying here? Ah we are Amshas of the lord, right? And why are we not blissful? Why are we experiencing this uncertainty? Why are we experiencing this depression? Why are we experiencing, oh my, why my desire is not satisfied? Why? Because we are identifying ourselves to be asat. We are satshit ananda. Ah in terms of quality, we are equal to the lord in terms of being satshit and ananda. Being eternal, being blissful and being knowledgeable. But why are we suffering? We are suffering because we are identifying ourselves with asat. What are we identifying ourselves with? We are identifying ourselves with this body. Right? This body which is perishable, this body which is changeable, we are identifying ourselves with the desires of this body, the desire of our mind. Ah I want to get this, I don't want to get this, I want to stand first in the class, I want to get hundred marks, I want to get this promotion, I want to get this bonus. Hmm. When we identify ourselves with with the needs of our material body. Hmm. Then ah we are, we are put into anxiety because we don't know what is there in the future. But when we understand that I am the servant of the lord, what is not within my control is within the control of the lord, then we will be in anxiety. We will not be in anxiety, we will just do our best in all situations and then we will move forward. Whatever is the result that is coming is by the mercy of the lord and that will determine our next path of action. That is it, right? We are not worried, why I should get this result? Oh, why am I not getting this result? Ah when we try to become controllers, we become frustrated. When we try to become servant, right? That is our constitutional position. We are servants. But when we try to act in that constitutional position of being a servant, being dependent on the lord. Hmm. Relying on the lord, surrendering to the lord, then we don't have anxiety. That is what Krishna also tells us a peace formula in five point twenty nine, right? Right? Krishna also tells in Bhagavad Gita, right? If there is no shanti, how can we expect ananda? Right? At least basic platform for ananda should be shanti. At least we should be in that platform, ah where we are not constantly lamenting for something that we have lost or hankering for something that we don't have. Right? Because we are satisfied with whatever we have and we put that in the best use and then we wait for the mercy of the lord. In that way, we will not be hankering, we will not be lamenting and that is a platform where we can go to the position of ananda. Otherwise, when we are suffering, ah we cannot directly jump into ananda. Ah at least we should come to the platform of shanti, no hankering and no lamentation. And what is the cause of suffering? Suffering and cause is only lamentation and hankering. Ah we want something that we don't have or we have, we are lamenting for something which we have lost. Hmm. That is the source of suffering. Hmm. That is why it is said ah that pain is inevitable in this material world. Right? We got this body because of our past desires, we cannot change ah our current situation. Ah but how do we respond to the current situation? We can change our future situation. Ah that is what, that is why we are studying Bhagavad Gita now, right? Whatever we are doing now, by this, we can change our future situation. We need not be in this deplorable condition that we are in now, even in our next birth. Hmm. We need not even take another birth. Ah that is what we are trying to understand from Bhagavad Gita, how to transcend the three modes of material existence, right? And Krishna is saying that is even possible in this material body. Being in this material world, it is still possible. Hmm. Let us see how is that possible? Okay, now Prabhupad is going to explain ah what is suffering, why people, why people are suffering, what is actual suffering? Ah Rishabalu Kanya Madhaji. Okay, I think Madhaji, you read already. Let's give a chance to who is not read. Karpa Goli Madhaji, go ahead.
Yes, Madhaji. Thank you, Madhaji. Hmm. Out of so many human beings who are suffering, there are few who are actually inquiring about their position. As to what they are, why they are put into such, into this awkward position and so on. Unless one is awakened in to this position of questioning his suffering, unless he realizes that he doesn't want suffering. But rather wants to make a solution to all suffering, then one is not to be considered a perfect human being. Humanity begins when this sort of inquiry is awakened in one's mind. In the Brahmasutra, this inquiry is called brahma. Ah every activity of the human being is to be considered a failure unless the inquiries of the nature, about the nature of the absolute. Therefore, those who begin to question why they are suffering or where they, or where they have come from and where they shall go. After that, a proper students for understanding Bhagavad Gita. A sincere student should also have firm respect for their supreme personality of Godhead, such a student was Arjuna.
Thank you, Madhaji.
Oh, thank you. Thank you so much.
Ah but you just said a very, two, three very important points in this paragraph. Ah what we have to see here is humanity begins with this inquiry. What is that inquiry? Right? Who am I? Why am I suffering in this world, right? Right? We have animals, we have birds, we have so many species of life, right? They are all put into a particular body according to their previous desires, but they don't inquire, why am I suffering in this, in this material body? A pig always thinks that I am enjoying, right? The pig is eating stool, but the pig is thinking I am enjoying, right? The best stool I have got and let me enjoy like this. Hmm. It is only in the platform of this human form of life that we have this ability ah to inquire, why am I suffering in this world, right? Apparently, even when we are happy, it is only a negation of a situation of suffering. We can never be happy in this world. Ah when, when suffering, when we suffer from severe headache and then we get a tablet, we put a croissant tablet. The headache goes away and what do we think? We think we are very happy. Hmm. Because, because our suffering is gone, ah just like Prabhupad explains that there is no situation called darkness. Right? We cannot, we cannot define darkness. What is darkness? Absence of light is darkness. Ah but otherwise, there is no. Ah astitwa, there is no identity for darkness. Similarly, hmm, there is no astitwa or there is no happiness in this material world, right? What we call happiness in this world is just absence of suffering. That is what we call happiness in this world. But the definition of happiness ah is the bliss that we experience when we serve the lord. And that is experienced in the spiritual world or is experienced when we develop that spiritual consciousness of serving the lord. Hmm. That bliss is ananda. Otherwise, in the material parlance, in terms of this material body, ah what is happiness? Absence of suffering is um happiness. Ah otherwise, there is no happiness because we are endeavoring for something, right? Because when we endeavor for something in this material world, we also saw that in the previous discussions, right? For example, if I want to get a um promotion this year, right? If I don't get the promotion, I am not going to be happy. Hmm. Even if I get the promotion, am I going to be satisfied with that? No, I may be satisfied for say three months or six months. After that, I want a higher position. After that, I want a higher salary, right? Is that giving me happiness? No, it just gave me the absence of suffering because I got what I wanted. For the next three to six months, I am not suffering because I have not got what I wanted. But after that, again I come back to the state where I want something more. I want a still higher position. I want more salary. Hmm. So there is no happiness in this material. Well, we are all suffering, but what are we thinking? Ah when we, when, when that is mitigated to a certain extent, ah we think we are happy. Hmm. So ah when we understand the real happiness, hmm, is only when ah we practice devotional service. Ah that is the proper understanding. Hmm. And that understanding can come only to a sincere student who has a firm respect for the supreme personality of Godhead. That's why it is said, we invest faith and then we get more faith. We were talking the other day also, right? When you are going in an auto rickshaw, even to the temple or to a shopping mall. Invest faith in the auto driver, right? Do we ask him, show me your license? Ah are you, are you authorized? No, we invest our faith in that auto driver, we get into the auto. Hmm. Why? Because he is wearing that uniform, right? Which is authorized. Ah he is coming in that, authorized. Um you know, and he has got that registration plate, ah where it is, where you know, that, that, you know, that yellow color auto. We know that it is, it is stamped or authorized ah by the Transport Authority of India, isn't it? Ah because of that, we place a trust. We don't place trust in anybody, any, any person who is going on the bike or any person who is going on any auto. Right? Which is not authorized. Ah if you simply get onto that particular bike, will he take us? He will take us to wherever he wants to. And probably he will rob us and he will throw us somewhere and go, isn't it? Ah so we cannot place our trust on anybody and everybody, but we are placing our faith in somebody who is speaking the message of the lord. Knowing well that he is part of the bona fide Guru Parampara, right? He is authorized, just like this auto valla is authorized by the Transport Authority. Similarly, of India, of the central government, authorized by the central government. Similarly, we place our trust in somebody who is speaking about the lord, who is coming in one of the four bona fide Guru Paramparas. Hmm. We are not, we are placing our faith, but we are not placing a blind faith. We also have some rules and regulations by which we know what is authorized, what is not authorized. And we place our faith on something that is authorized. And regulations by which we know what is authorized what is not authorized and we place our faith on something that is authorized yeah Alright so let's move forward Okay so Jai Muthi Radha Mathaji go ahead Lord Krishna listens specifically Mathaji you need to unmute yourself are you able to
Ah okay Mathaji now it does happen
Yes yes go ahead
Lord Krishna decides speci- specifically to the Reestablish the real purpose of life when man forgets that purpose even then out of many many human beings who awaken There there may be one who actually enters the spirit of understanding his position and for him this Bhagavad Gita is spoken actually we are all swallowed by the tigers for Ness Nessies
Nissains
Nissains but the Lord is very merciful Very merciful upon swallowed by the Tigers of Nissains but the Lord is very merciful upon living entities especially human beings to this end To this end he spoke He spoke the Bhagavad Gita making his friend Arjuna his student Being an associate of our Lord Krishna Arjuna was above all the ignorance but Arjuna was put into Ignorance on the battlefield of Kurukshetra just to question Lord Krishna about the problems of life So that the Lord could explain them for the benefit of future generations of human beings and chalk out the plan of life Then man could act accordingly and perfect the mission of human life
Thank you Mathaji Hare Krishna Yeah thank you so much stand up so here very important point right the other day I think we were discussing about this Right how the mother-in-law corrects the daughter-in-law right if the mother-in-law at the daughter-in-law comes you know the first day You don't anything what is this you are speaking like this yeah you know this is not the way this to be done daughter-in-law will run away Isn't it so the mother-in-law will teach the daughter-in-law through the daughter right the daughter-in-law may be doing something wrong But the mother-in-law will be chastising the daughter the daughter already knows but must be wondering why is mother suddenly telling all this to me today Right so the mother-in-law is teaching the daughter-in-law through the daughter Ah because the mother-in-law is already ah the mother has already established the relationship with the daughter The daughter will not probably run away ah but today's scenario it may not be applicable even the daughter will You know yell back at the mother why are you yelling at me I didn't do anything ah but this is an example that Prabhupada gives Ah maybe at that time daughters would not yell back at the mother But the point is ah that we are trying to understand here is hmm Krishna already had the relationship with Arjuna Arjuna is the devotee of the Lord right good daughters we can say right they they will accept Ah that the mother is actually trying to save a servant purpose a bigger purpose ah not just interested in scolding me Isn't it ah in this way the mother-in-law teaches the daughter-in-law through the daughter hmm similarly Krishna through Arjuna is teaching all of us Who are conditioned uh souls who are frustrated in this material world hmm how to bring these people Ah to get interested in the spiritual subject matters ah like that Krishna is teaching all of us through Arjuna Hmm and Krishna is giving us how we can chalk out the plan of our life so that in this lifetime we go back home back to Godhead Ah we don't think that this material world is you know uh you know what is that ye zindaki na milegi dobara like something like that Right so this life is meant to be enjoying I got this life let me enjoy ah that is not the understanding of life That is why we need to understand from Bhagavad Gita that we don't want another life right we don't want another life in this material world We want to go back home back to Godhead for that to even have that desire ah we should know that we are in a sick condition Now if we think you know the being in the bed You know I've heard that you know one person who was actually sick so much sick ah he was begging you know He was begging the Lord you know I have so many things to do ah please please I was going to one Baba after another Paying a lot of money accumulated so much of money ah but in the deathbed can he take anything not even a paisa we can take not even a pin we can take And not even a farthing we can take isn't it she was begging all the sadhus I will give you all the money I want so much Throughout my life I will give you all the money ah just let me ah let me live for another four or five years I have certain things to do And the sadhu he himself cannot extend his own life by one second ah what will what will he do ah to extend this person's life hmm So in this way we are in so much illusion ah that if I have lot of money I will be very happy And in this way I will spend my life happily and at the end of the life what will happen hmm if you if you have enjoyed Ah in the way that is there in this material world we are sure ah to not even come back as human beings Ah if you have enjoyed our life really the way we want to enjoy That is not happiness ah if you really want bliss if you really want the real happiness that it cannot be taken away Ah then we need to sincerely understand ah the five things ah that Bhagavad Gita is going to teach us hmm So as we proceed now we are going to talk about five important subject matters of Bhagavad Gita what are those Ishvara Jiva Prakriti Kala and Karma hmm we are going to go to the next section um wherein you are going to talk about The Lord who is the Ishvara who is the creator of this entire material world and you will talk about Jiva That is we we conditioned living entities ah what is our duty what we should be doing ah what is our nature Ishvara Jiva and then Prakriti ah Prakriti is has been designed by the Lord and has been given to us So that we can satisfy our desires hmm if we go according to the rulebook Or the Dharma or the Shastra and in this way we enjoy our life then we will be promoted to a higher destination If we enjoy without disregarding or you know without taking into consideration the shastric The shastras then we will be degrading ourselves to lower species of life And then ah and then what is what else is going to be explained ah Ishvara Jiva Prakriti and then Kala Hmm the importance of time very very important right like a like a farmer sows the seed Ah and then immediately does he get the harvest no ah when does he get the harvest he gets the harvest Like recently yesterday was this Makarashankaran tea it also marks you know the harvest season Where people you know the farmers actually get their crops ah but did they sow the seed the previous day no Ah they have to wait for the Kala hmm like that whenever we do a particular endeavor um the Kala plays a very important factor By which we can get the results of our activities and then Karma hmm Karma represents the activities the chase Or the endeavor ah that we perform for the satisfaction of our desires can we change Ah only thing that we can change out of all of this is Karma right you will be destined ah to be born like according to the activities Ah that you've been doing until now maybe we will get a body of a hog in our next life but from now onwards Hmm if we are going to sincerely study Bhagavad Gita sincerely develop a taste to chant Hare Krishna we We can change our karma we can change our future ah rather than become a pig ah we will not even get a material body we may get a spiritual body And we can go back home back to Godhead so much of change we can do hmm from just by transitioning our life From performing vi karma or karma to performing a karma hmm that means we don't have any further um Bondage and none of our activities will bind us to this material world ah so this is what is going to be our subject matter Which we will take up tomorrow hmm these five subject matters we will discuss in detail ah as part of introduction given by Sheila Prabhupada Jagat Guru Sheila Prabhupada ki jay Granth Raj Shrimad Bhagavad Gita ki jay So now we will open the forum for um questions if anybody has any questions queries um doubts Or realizations ah everything you can share and for the next uh say five to six minutes And then quickly we will do about three four minutes of Hari Nam Sangkiratan and then we will end up a session okay Moni Malamathaji is it for reading your your hand is up for reading Everyone can unmute themselves now so yeah please go ahead If there are no questions then there are two things one is I have not understood what you've been speaking for the last Forty-five minutes I simply gone above hmm cannot understand anything then you can share that also Secondly second thing is I have understood everything there is nothing that is required to be understood further And that is a very very wonderful um uh situation to be in hmm so whichever be the case I would request two three devotees at least to tell you know whether it is the first or the second is yeah
Hare Krishna Mathaji
Yes Mathaji
Mathaji yeh Abidaya and Preojana uh please tell me one second Mathaji
Okay so there are three things we will learn we said uh Sambanda Abidaya and Preojan right Uh Sambanda means understanding who am I Ah who is the supreme personality of Godhead ah and what is my relationship with the supreme personality of Godhead Right ah so that is Sambanda what is Abidaya I know what is my relationship with the Lord ah but then Um how do I reawaken that relationship how do I work in such a way that I have this relationship with the Lord right So that is the Abidaya right that means if I am a servant I should work in a way that pleases the Okay so that is Abidaya that means I do the work in a way that pleasing to my master And then finally Preojana is what is awarded by the supreme lord ah that is Krishna Prima what is our desire Right we um so it is like um we are joining an office right first and foremost we need to know our designation Right I am joining as Assistant Vice President or Vice President ah then um you know whom should I report to hmm that is the probably the CEO of the company Ah and then what is what is my job description what am I supposed to do ah so that ah I can I can please the master or the CEO of the company Similarly who is the Lord who am I what is my duty towards the Lord so that I can serve in a way that is pleasing to the Lord These are the three topics okay Mathaji is that okay
Horrible Mathaji thank you Mathi
Thank you Hare Krishna yeah Rohini Mathaji anything
Mathaji in the beginning of the lecture you you gave that breakup of Upanishad no if you could say that again because it's not there in this book In Bhagavad Gita
Yeah so Upanishad means upa upa means ah in the Sanskrit word upa means ah to 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 be near Right ah and nishad means to sit down right so that is why in the earlier times they used to send the children to the gurukul Right where you sit near the teacher and try to understand the subject matter Right it can also be referred to um you know upanishad means sitting next to the teacher And render service to the teacher here in a submissive way from the teacher and that is how upanishads are supposed to be understood Hmm that is why Gita is called Gita Upanishad right Gita Upanishad that means ah it is the song of God Ah wherein Arjuna was actually sitting next to the spiritual we see that picture right then Arjuna says Sishestehamsadi Maantvam Prapanam where he actually puts down the bow and arrow is actually bending down Ah to the spiritual to a spiritual master to the person whom he surrendered hmm so that is the attitude In which we need to surrender to the to the person whom we are learning this upanishad from okay Mathaji
Thank you Mathaji
Hare Krishna so anything else from devotees Is this okay can we follow this format as we go ahead Okay so I can see a few thumbs up ah so thank you very much so we will do Hari Nam Sangkiratan and then we will end up a session Namah okay I'll just mute everyone you can all sing along uh you know as you are muted Uh so that you know we can do this dedicate this um for the pleasure of Guru and Goranga Namah Om this is Abidaya right what we are doing now is Abidaya because we want to reestablish our connection with the Lord Hmm we are actually praising the Lord glorifying the Lord asking for opportunities to serve the Lord hmm so we can all sing this as we are muted Namah Om Vishnu Padhaya Krishna Prishthaya Bhutale Simate Bhaktivedanta Swamini Tinoamin Namaste Saraswate Deva Gauravani Pracharin Nirviseshav Shunyavadi Aschatyadishataari Me Jaya Sri Krishna Sri Advaita Gadha Dharah Shiva Sadhi Gaurabhakta Binda Jaya Sri Krishna Chaitanya Sri Advaita Gadha Dharah Shiva Sadhi Gaurabhakta Binda Hare Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram Ramu Ramu Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram Ramu Ramu Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram Ramu Ramu Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram Ramu Ramu Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram Ramu Ramu Hare Hare Jaya Gauranitai Jaya Gauranitai Jaya Gauranitai Jaya Gauranitai Jaya Gauranitai Jaya Gauranitai Gauranitai Jaya Gauranitai Jaya Radha Mahdav Radha Mahdav Radhe Radhe Jaya Radha Mahdav Radha Mahdav Radhe Radhe Jaya Radhe Jaya Radhe Jaya Radhe Jaya Sri Radhe Jaya Radhe Jaya Radhe Jaya Radhe Jaya Sri Radhe Jaya Jaya Prabhu Pad Prabhu Pad Prabhu Pad Jaya Jaya Prabhu Pad Jaya Jaya Guru De Guru De Guru De Jaya Jaya Guru De Nittai Gaurahari Bol Hare Bol Hare Bol Sri Sri Hari Nam Sangkiratan Ki Jai Jagat Guru Sheila Prabhupada Ki Jai Shilpa Guru Dev Ki Jai Anantakoti Roshnava Vind Ki Jai All Glories to Semile Boody's Hare Krishna All Glories to Semile Boody's Hare Krishna All Glories to Semile Boody's Hare Krishna All Glories All Glories All Glories Sri Sri Guru and Sri Goranga Shilpa Prabhupada Ki Jai Hare Krishna so thank you very much so we will meet tomorrow morning for those of you who are joining in for the Brahman Murtah chanting please meet us at Five AM and those of us joining us for path for perfection we will be concluding the chapter tomorrow mostly so please join us at eleven thirty And then at twelve o'clock we start our continuation of the introduction to Shrimad Bhagavad Gita as it is Jagat Guru Sheila Prabhupada Ki